Are you going? Alrighty, good morning everyone, it's a little after nine. This is our last meeting in July, which is just weird, but we're gonna start out with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have public meetings set up this morning at ten. And then we have an executive session at ten thirty, so those are things that are happening after the meeting. First off, the Board of Health, is there any public comment for Board of Health this morning from anyone? Don't hear or see anybody, so I will close public comment Board of Health and move on to the consent agenda, um do I hear a motion?
Oh yeah, I move to, move to approve item A consent agenda. Subject to adequate budget appropriations and all county policies.
Yeah, I will second today on necessity, um Fisher Tobin is on a planned getaway, so um we hope he's having a good time. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 he's still waiting. So, okay, um, so that will close the Board of Health agenda, we'll move on to Board of County Commissioners. And again, public comments period, is there any public comment for Board of County Commissioner? I don't hear or see any hands up. So, um, I will close, close public comment. And we will move on to the consent agenda, which is items one through five, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve consent agenda items one through five, subject to adequate budget appropriations and all county policies.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, moving on to Superior Court item six.
I move to approve the request to post, advertise and hire a senior Superior Court Administrator slash Recorder slash Family Law Facilitator. Local three six seven C, Union Representative Grade twenty-one, subject to adequate budget appropriations.
I will second. Um, I don't see anyone from the court on, they're probably in court. Um, but this is a position that um they've been wanting to put in the court system for a long time. So we're very happy that we're able to help them figure out how to do that.
It has our past labor management and previously came before the board, it was.
Thank you. Uh, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, items regarding the clerk's office item seven.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero five three in the matter of establishing an impress fund for the county clerk's office. For the purpose of paying jurors with debit cards and rescind resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero four three.
Okay.
Rescind.
I'm rescinding.
I'm sorry. I was sorry. I was multi-thinking, big mistake, big mistake. Sorry, very. Oh, I will second. You know, I don't even know who this, but all bail me out.
Sure, so resolution, the previous resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four three put in place an impressed fund of five thousand dollars. To allow the court to pay uh jurors with debit cards. On further review, five thousand wasn't quite enough, costs have gone up across the board. The first payment exceed, would have exceeded five thousand dollars. And then talking with Emma Rose, a clerk of the Superior Court. Yes, checking with Katie Kimball in the county auditor's office, making sure that we have the thresholds correct. Figured raising this to ten thousand dollars would be appropriate and acceptable amount. Hence, taking twenty twenty-three oh forty-three off the books and putting twenty twenty-three oh fifty-three on at the ten thousand dollar amount, so. Just a matter of costs increasing.
What happens if, do we know this, what happens if people don't redeem them, does it stay in this limit?
So.
Or do we know that yet?
I, I, I think we'll work that out, I think part of this, in doing this way with the debit cards as opposed to cutting checks. Where we had checks in the past that would have been cut, we would have run into unclaimed property issues, and this is a way to.
Have debit cards something now because they have, because they never expire, right? Okay.
So this, this helps to mitigate some of those unclaimed properties that we otherwise would have had if we were doing things the old way.
Yeah.
Try to modernize.
And it clears the books, like we don't have to make sure the check didn't.
Right, right, yeah, cuz I think we have to keep it on the books for like a year or something before we turn, or maybe more. Some of those unplanned properties are really old.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
Alright. Um, hopefully I second that.
You're welcome.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I am eight, I'm trying to clean up my act.
You're good. I move to approve the request to promote Shannon Pettit to the Senior Deputy Clerk slash Financial Position, local three six seven C. Union Representative Grade nineteen, step nine, effective August first, twenty twenty-three. Subject to adequate budget appropriations and in accordance with local three six seven C collective bargaining agreement, section five point one zero promotion.
I'll second. And um, yeah, good for Shannon, she kind of been doing these duties anyway, so this works out well, yeah, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Items regarding Sheriff's Office item nine.
I move to approve the request for twelve weeks of family medical leave for a qualifying event effective July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. And authorize leave credit transfers with the expiration date of October third, twenty twenty-three.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Items regarding Auditor's Office item ten.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three zero five four in the matter of closing the advanced travel fund revolving account.
I'll second.
Advanced travel is something we don't do anymore, we don't need to be in that, closing the event?
Yep. Big bang bum, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Items regarding Sheriff's Office item eleven.
I move to approve the hire of Justin Smith, Road Deputy, and Dustin Aker, Road Deputy, both step two. In accordance with the wage schedule approved as part of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two collective bargaining agreement. Effective August first, twenty twenty-three, subject to adequate budget appropriations.
My second. See, getting some more folks on Sheriff.
Yeah.
One left.
Yeah. Um.
Thank you.
Have they been through the?
No, go ahead.
Have they been through the, the academy or their own?
No, uh, we will have to get them in, um, and uh, but. They each have a lot of life experience, uh, one used to be in the military and a contractor for um. Uh, delegate security and then the other, a journeyman electrician. So um, they both bring skill sets that will seamlessly or should seamlessly integrate into uh what we have going, so. They're excellent choices and also our only choices.
Makes the maximum choices.
Did you ask um, um, de- delegate security, is he gonna get bored here?
Well, what it does is it uh, it keeps him in county for his family and uh, that's uh, a plus for his life situation, so.
Good for him.
We're glad that we have these.
Alrighty, yeah, definitely. Okay.
I, I am welcome aboard, boys.
It's good. Um, items regarding the Department of Works item twelve.
I move to approve the agreement for on-call professional services with Mountain Two Coast LLC regarding survey services on an as-needed basis.
I will second that. Chris?
The county doesn't have any licensed professional surveyors and there are some tasks like resetting monitors that require them. But we do it on a fairly regular basis, so this gives us the ability to have an on-call surveying contract. So we don't need to go uh for qualifications for each of those type of projects.
Yeah, you've been working on this for a bit, so.
Yes.
Good to get through, huh? Yeah.
Have we done all these papers before, have you?
Oh, no, actually, this will be the first time we're going with the county.
Okay. Alrighty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Items regarding Health and Human Services Department, item thirteen.
I move to approve the contract for prevention and promotion client services, number K six nine six four. With Washington State Healthcare Authority. Renewing funding to provide substance use disorder prevention and mental health promotion services. Effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June twen- thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, and authorize the chair to electronically sign.
I'll second. Katie, this is a renewal.
Correct, we've had this one for many, many years, um, before my time even, so just a renewal with the new bay area.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item fourteen.
I move to approve the federal interagency agreement, number twenty-four dash four six one nine D dash one one seven. With Washington State Department of Commerce Housing Division regarding funding for emergency housing projects. Effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, and confirm the director's electronic signature.
I'll second.
So this one is, this one is new, it's just some new housing funding that's coming down, it's meant to replace some of the emergency housing funding. That came down um during the pandemic. Um, so it'll continue some, uh, we do hotel leasing and other emergency housing with um PPR. Um, we also, I, I think it's agenda item sixteen, um, so a couple down from where you're at now. Um, we are gonna release an RFP or an RFQ to find interested providers in this, we don't have a ton in the community, but because it's new federal money. We are releasing a, an additional new RFQ, just to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's on that.
Thank you. Um, you have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item fifteen.
I move to approve the issuance of a request for qualifications and proposal for Pacific County Public Health Officer Services.
I'll second.
So we're not in any way unhappy with Clark County, um, Dr. Craig's public knowledge has been fantastic, but it has been four years, believe it or not, since we um. Initially went into contract with them, um, so it's just time to put it out for bid again, just in, you know, to be in accordance with um, good bidding practices and. Um, open public work and whatnot. So um, we're gonna, um, if you guys approve this today, we'll release it today and then. Um, we have our health uh subcommittee off of our Health and Human Services Advisory Board, they would review any applications that came in. Potentially do interviews and then they would make a recommendation for a new contract um that would take place October first. For um, the end of, through the end of this year and then four additional years.
So you're gonna do four-year contracts with the, is that gonna be a new thing, since we didn't have a contract for a certain amount of years with Clark?
We are at the very end of our first four-year contract with Clark County, um, but it started, uh, Mary actually did it, so I wasn't involved the first time, but. The initial contract started four years ago in October. Um, and so because I wanna get us onto a calendar year cycle. Um, this new one will finish out this year, so it'll be October through December of this year, plus four years. So then it'll be four years from basically January that we'll, we'll then go through this process again.
And, and before that, Commissioner, we had um, we had Dr. Edstone on as our. Uh, who, who had been in a practicing position here for many years, he was our health officer for many years.
Yeah.
And when he retired, we kind of went. And luckily Clark County stepped in and I think Katie, I can say that you've been pretty, pretty darn happy with them.
Yeah, we've been really happy with them, Dr. Craig is a great fit for us, and then it's really nice too because we have Dr. Melnick as a backup. So anytime Dr. Craig is out of town or on vacation, anything like that. Um, we have a ready backup, it's almost twenty-four seven coverage that they provide and they're great to work with.
And they provide for a couple other counties as well, so there's a lot of shared information and shared experience and a lot of that going on, right?
Correct, yeah, they are the health officer for us, um, Clark County obviously, Skamania and Cowlets and Wakayakam. So kind of have a little southwest Washington region going on.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been working out really well. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item sixteen.
I move to approve the issuance of a request for qualifications to provide services through the eviction prevention and how emergency housing.
I'll second.
Yep, so this is the one I had mentioned just before, it's that new money coming down, and then there's also eviction prevention funding that's coming down through um Department of Commerce. So we're doing an RFQ for both of those programs, it's likely to be the same type of providers. They'll have an option to respond to one or both um funding types to be a provider for either of those programs. Um, same thing with the, oh, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry Katie, um, is that the one that um, when we had it during COVID? Like at the end of COVID, we had that, that outfit um that I had seen at the leaders conference.
Oh, live stories?
Yeah, I couldn't remember their name.
Yeah, it's similar money, um, but with this, um, so we had also, it was very convoluted. Initially, we had the contract and we subcontract, we provided most of the service directly to people. But we also had a requirement to subcontract with a buy-in for organizations, so we had contracted with PCIS. Pacific County Immigrant Support to provide some of that um rent assistance out to certain targeted communities. Um, then we had switched it over so that the stuff we were providing directly was gonna go through live stories. Because it was too much for our financial system to be processing all of those rent payments, it got overwhelming um for both of us and the auditor's office. Um, and so um, this is actually the same, similar money, I think it might be from a different funding source, but it's the same intent, it's eviction prevention funding. And um, it's just additional new funding that's coming in, uh, as of July first. So we're putting it back out just for, uh, request for qualifications to see if there's a provider in the community who wants to provide it. It's not enough to have it go through live stories. Um, it's a lot smaller amount, so I anticipate like a C cap or a PPR or maybe a PCIS, one of those. Agencies will be likely to respond and then we'll just weave it into their current contract and add it as a program.
Sounds good, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item seventeen.
I move to approve release of request for applications for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Behavioral Health Services.
Second.
So we're just in the mode right now of releasing all of the money and the contracts, um, you know, again, we're trying to stay compliant with, with bidding and whatnot. Um, this is the, every two years, we renew our one tenth, one percent behavioral health um contracts. They would become effective in January, but we start the process now to give people time to apply. The committee will have time to judge, we'll have time to put contracts together, um, those will be, then be effective January first. Um, we have woven in a couple other behavioral health funding sources into this, um. You guys are aware of the opioid settlement dollars that have come down, so those dollars are also woven into this for, for us to apply for. Um, and I believe we put in some um second chance reentry, the federal grant that we have with the sheriff. Um, to do some behavioral healthcare in the jail, um, and so that's also woven into this um RFA as well.
Thank you, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, item eighteen.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Wellspring Mini Grant Memorandum of Understanding with Wellspring Community. Network regarding the grant received to purchase hygiene supplies to distribute. To use an amount of three hundred dollars and authorize the director to sign.
Second.
This is the, this is a little one, but it's, since it's a signature is required, it's uh on your agenda, um. Lori had applied for some, a small grant from Wellspring to uh buy hygiene supplies that are gonna be distributed during um the sex ed classes that our nurses teach at the schools.
Right. Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item nineteen.
I move to approve the request to promote Miranda Hecker to the Human Services Program Specialist Position. Local three six seven C, Union Representative Grade twenty-one, step three, effective August first, twenty twenty-three. Subject to adequate budget appropriations and in accordance with local three six seven C collective bargaining agreement, sections five point one zero promotion. And move to approve the request to post, advertise and hire for an accountant, local three six seven C, Union Representative Grade nineteen position.
Second.
Feel like that one was a mouthful, um, I, we talked about it at our uh workshop recently, but looking to promote Miranda into a new position, um, to do some. Uh, primarily mental health promotion work with um adolescent girls in local schools, um, which has been identified as a huge need, so. Very excited about that, but then of course, we definitely need to backfill her position cuz she's vacating, very important position to the department.
Right, well, we hope she likes it.
Yeah, for sure do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, sure. Moving forward.
Thanks Katie, items regarding County Fair, item twenty.
I move to approve the contract agreement for ATM services with J and B Halting, providing ATM services at the County Fair. Subject to adequate budget appropriations and receipt of issue, insurance and authorized chair to sign.
Second. Think we did receive the insurance, didn't we?
I don't, I don't believe it has been received, I talked to him this morning and he will be submitting that for us.
Maybe. Um, we had that out there last year for the first time, I think it was a big benefit.
You give us cash anymore, right?
I like that.
We like cash, though, right?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Items regarding Vegetation Management, item twenty-one, I didn't see Bill's phone, okay, item twenty-one.
I move to confirm the director's signature on interagency agreement, number K three five four nine. With Washington State Department of Agriculture to control invasive knotweed species and move to approve amendment number one. To interagency agreement, number K three five four nine. With Washington State Department of Agriculture to extend the end date from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And increase funding by twenty thousand dollars and authorize the director to sign.
Second. Mr. We've, we've been chasing for years, so. I don't see chat, so, um, anyway. Any questions?
Aye.
Aye. Items regarding General Business, item twenty-two.
This is me, Pauline. Oh, yeah. I move to approve the Wilpa Bay Lead Entity twenty twenty-three Salmon Recovery Funding Board Scoring and Ranking Results. Specifically, project number twenty-three dash one zero one six, ranked number one. South Greenhead Bear Confluence Design, sponsored by Columbia River Estuary Study Task Force. Number twenty-three, one one four seven, ranked number two, Robertson Road Design, sponsored by the Pacific Ca- Conservation District. Number twenty-three, eleven forty-nine, ranked number three, Root Creek S R S I Small Study. Sponsored by the Wilpa Fisheries Enhancement Group. Number twenty-three, eleven twenty-four, ranked number four, Patent Creek Design, sponsored by the Wilpa Fisheries Enhancement Group. And number twenty-three, one two two four, ranked number five, North Wilpa Floodplain Reconnection Design, sponsored by Ducks Unlimited. Number twenty-three, one zero four eight, ranked number six, Government Road Estuary Design, sponsored by Sea Resources. And number twenty-three, one two three one, ranked number seven, Talbot Dam Removal, sponsored by the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Sure that was right?
That was a lot, that was a lot, it was perfect.
I'll second that. I see, um, I saw Tom Colash on here, is he still here?
Yes.
There he is.
I am here, yeah, I would note that the, just for everybody, the mu- the annual allocation that we have will just fund those. Top three projects. The other uh four remaining projects would remain on our list as alternates. Um, in case some other funding pops up through the salmon recovery fund board.
Top three, is that Tom?
The top three, yes, the South Greenhead Bear, the Robertson Road and the Root Creek RSI Small Study.
Hey. I know you guys put a lot of work into these rankings, so thank you for that.
You're welcome, we'll be, we'll be uh doing some more work on it, it was a bit of a struggle this year and um, we're looking to look at our bylaws with you and look at our scoring sheet. Um, and if we can address some of the issues that we feel like we ran into this year as a committee.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're happy to do that with you. I just set up a workshop if you need to.
Will do.
Okay, thanks Tom. All in favor? Aye, aye, these are um, the work that the lead entity does is super important, it, it's stuff that. The county would never be able to address, um, and keeps our. You know, highlights our culverts that aren't working and our fish runs and, and you guys do a lot of really good work, thank you.
Okay, so, um. That is if a regular will go on to our additional agenda. So um, first item is under public works, item number one. I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three, zero five five for the temporary road closure of Territory Road number five seven six two zero. Between milepost zero point one, zero point eight School Street and milepost zero point zero. Oysterville Road for utility work on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, eight AM to four PM.
So it's a bit retroactive with the, you know.
Sorry for the.
Sorry, that's funny, we kind of got it as a last minute request, but it's a quick.
Yeah, I know, it's okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, additional number two.
I move to approve the beer garden contract with Wild Man Brewing Company to provide beer garden at the twenty twenty-three County Fair. Subject to receive a required insurance and license service.
Second. So all the parents who have to sit there while their kids run around will be happy for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it'll be better.
Yeah.
Yes.
It has to be.
Yeah.
Um, item number three.
I move to approve the Community Development Lot Grant, CDVG Program General Purpose Grant Contract Number. Two two, dash six two two one zero, dash zero three one. With Washington State Department of Commerce for the American Legion Veterans Housing and Resource Center in downtown Raymond and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
So the county applied for and received this one million dollar CDVG grant. This is indirect federal money that originates with. This is indirect federal money that originates with, uh, housing and urban development. Passes through the Washington State Department of Commerce. It's reimbursable, so county, of course, has to submit reimbursement requests. Should note that we have a sub recipient noted on this grant, it's the Welpa. Community Development Association, W C D A. They've been great partners to work with, put in a lot of time and effort here.
Yeah, they really help.
And, and the purpose of this project, I had noted it in my narrative of the quest, just to put it on the record. Is to provide social services, emergency housing, and multipurpose community meeting space on the first floor of a Legion building. Plus fourteen housing units on the second floor. It's a great project. This is one of many different funding sources.
Yeah.
That's going towards this.
Well, that's why it took a bit of time to piece together all the funding was, um. Fun to do.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
So happy to have this presented to the board.
Yeah, very much. I think this will be a really great. Addition to downtown Raymond and, and those apartments are going to be veteran first.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I don't know if they're veteran only, but I know they'll be veteran first.
Correct.
So, um, yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, if you've never been up there, it's a cool building.
It really is. I hadn't until we did the walk.
Already?
When, uh, Camp, um, Center Camp, okay. And it, it really is neat, yeah.
It's a cool building. For sure. There's a lot of doctors, obviously.
I think that, yeah, yeah.
It's pretty cool here.
Give me a few other things, but.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks for doing all that work, Paul.
Yeah.
That's been, um, quite a collaboration trying to. Trying to help piece together that stuff, so.
Again, very good partners with the W C D A, so. Great partners with the W C D A.
Yeah. And we'll end up, we're, we end up needing to surpass through for a portion of the money, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And they have a large, they also got a large grant to go at the apartments.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there was, it was a bit complicated getting all that together. But, yeah, they, they worked really hard on it, so.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, anyway, all right, so. We will come back in just about a half an hour for our ten o'clock public hearing. Um, so we'll see everybody in about a half an hour. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's nice. We're ready to. All right. What's everybody? It's ten o'clock and we are back for our public hearing, public hearing portion of the meeting, um. So I will open the public hearing and I will swear in anyone that wishes to speak regarding this. Um, matter. I know that, um, we'll bring up Grace. And Blair. Be sworn in. Is there anyone from the public that would like to? To speak? We've got Doug and June on here. Did you want to speak? Regarding this? Ear muted.
Yeah, I just had a question.
Well, if, if you would just, it's part of the process, um, once we do a public hearing process, we gotta follow the rules, so. I just need you to, um, raise your right hand, please, all of you. Do you solemnly swear affirm that to the best of your knowledge, testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
Thank you. Um. Okay, so, um. I think, go, go ahead, folks. Well, Doug and, and then June, if you have things you want to say, go ahead.
Well, I just had, apparently there were some issues with ownership for some of the properties.
There is, yeah.
So I, I know like our particular property, we have, uh, a hundred and, or three hundred and sixty eight feet of a hundred and sixty eighth and then. Five hundred and ninety three feet of, uh. Uh. Mill Lane on our property and then I am a part owner of the property next to it where there's six hundred and four feet. I know that the, there's easement on those properties. I'm not sure where the. Properties that issue are, so.
Yeah. There's a, there's a very large stretch that still is in the own and ownership, which, um, it doesn't sound like it will be, um. Um, they, they're not opposed at all. Um, it's just the process, so.
Can, can he just give that to the county?
Bruce. Yes, he can grant us easement. Um, the easement that you have, Doug, uh, actually isn't to the public. It's for the benefit of your neighbors. Um, so we have to go through with each property owner and update those easements, and it's a little bit longer for process than we originally thought it might be. Um. Because when we looked into the easement language in more detail, those easements aren't dedicated to the public, so we can't just incorporate it into the county system.
Okay, but he can't just gift that his, his portion to the county? He can get granted.
Yeah, yeah, that would be part of the process, I think, is reaching, I've already reached out to him about that.
Right, well, what I, my question is, uh, uh, he can grant an easement or can he just gift the whole, gift it to the county?
He, I, I believe he would just gift it as, as a, a, a right of way because. Um, he doesn't own any property in there any longer. That is all he owns. This left is the strip that he owns. Which is road.
He could do either as far as the right of way process is concerned, but he may prefer to, uh, just gift it.
Okay, right, okay. Okay, that was the only question.
Okay, June, did you have anything?
No, I was just going to comment if there was anything that came up during the meeting. I didn't have anything specific to say.
Oh, okay. Well, um, I'll just go ahead and tell you, we, we've done, thanks, thanks to Grace, um, our engineer and to Blair, our G I S person. And DPW person, and DPW, I'm looking at it a little square, um, and DPW, they did, um. Uh. Blair did a ton of, of background re-. Research on ownership and stuff and, and Grace has done a lot as well. And, um, our, our biggest obstacle right now is the fact that the county does not own. The right of way and we would have to to do this. There are some other. Um, there, there's a. A few different ways we can go on this and I actually. Went and called, um, Bernie in between meetings to just let him know, um. Because this is the only number I had. I'm sorry, you guys, but, um. I, I think probably the best thing to do at this point would be to set up a workshop with, um. With the commissioners and, um. And Department of Public Works and, um. Um, I think Bernie's kind of the person, your lead person, and then, you know, whoever else wants to come. But if we could keep it like a small group, like maybe, maybe two or three or four of you folks. Um. And then, um, and then kind of go over the options that we have on how to proceed with this. Um, cause there is, there is gonna be, you know, I. The expense that you have had is one of the reasons you're wanting to petition the county. And, um, and we have to also. Figure out if. Um, if this road fits into our plan as a county road as well. So, um, so there's just some things that we need to go over and I think doing that. Face to face in a room around a table is, is a much better way to do it, if you, if some of you don't mind doing that. Go ahead, Doug.
Okay, so, uh, so, I mean, there's eleven million dollars of assessed value on the road right now, so that we're paying. You know, we pay into the, the funds that, that maintain the road, so I can't see any reason why. You know, there wouldn't, you, you wouldn't, you know, or it wouldn't be adopted by the county, so. But, yeah, I'd be happy to work with, with Bernie on a committee to, uh, you know, work the, work the issues out, so.
Yeah, that, that would be great, um. Yeah, this isn't usually how a public hearing goes, but we've never had one that kind of fell apart before we got through the process, so. So we're kind of, we're kind of winging it here. Um, so, so we, we would normally call for, um, call for a motion, but I think what we'll. What we'll do if. Uh, um, are, are we all kind of clear on where we're going from here? Are you, Doug and June, are you clear on the fact that we need to meet and get together and talk about how to move forward?
Yeah, I understand that. So, I mean, there's, ob- owner, obviously, if there's ownership issues, I, I just. Like I say, you know, for, for eleven million dollars in assessed value. That we're, you know, we're paying into funds and then, then I can't understand why the county wouldn't take the road over, so. Anyway, but once, once those, once those things are ironed out, so.
Right, yeah, that, and those are the things that we'll talk about, so. Um, so we'll probably set that up in the next couple weeks. Um, that's what I told Bernie when I talked to him just a little bit ago. He said to just let, let, let him know and he'll get together with you guys and, and, and then we'll, we'll have a meeting. Okay.
Yeah, because I know, like, on this end, on, on where I'm on the, uh, east side of Mill Lane. And on Mill Lane, the easements are all off the properties on the east side of the road. There's no easements off the, the west side properties. It's all off the east side properties. And then when you get to the, when you get to the far end of Mill Lane, there are ten acre parcels and the, the, the Ru- Mill Lane actually runs through the middle of those parcels.
Right, yes, it does.
Yeah, so.
Yep. All righty. Okay, so, um. If that's all the comment, I'm gonna close the public comment period, the public hearing portion. And then what I will say instead of asking for. A, um. Motion is that after additional research being done during this process. It has been decided that we can't move forward with it as proposed, so we are going to close this public hearing process and look to. Um. Probably reopen it at a later date. Okay? And so that would conclude our meeting today.
And recess till ten thirty for executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry. That, that would conclude our public hearing today. Our actual meeting has to recess until ten thirty when we have an executive session, which will be a process.
Yeah.
So, thank you both for logging on today. We appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
All righty. Yeah.
Overhand. The sun. In Mason Penny.
Thank you to everyone. Okay. Um. We're back in session. Um, we will be going out. Um. For our executive session. And, uh, for the purposes and performance of a public employee and potential litigation provided by R C W forty two dot thirty dot one, ten. Subsections one G and one I. Um, we will be in an executive session for approximately ninety minutes outs at about noon, so. It is ten thirty three right now, so we will see everybody at noon or shortly thereafter.